Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the Dearborn Board of Education regular scheduled meeting of February 10, 2020 to order. Roll call, please.
Mary Lane is here. Roxanne McDonald here. Michael Mead.
Here.
Adal Mosad.
Here.
Mary Pachlikoff.
Here.
James Starb.
Here.
President Berry.
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Zaina Teba, Principal of Lindbergh Elementary School, will introduce students who will lead the pledge of allegiance.
Today I have with me Ms. Alora Bazey and Mr. Ben Roth that will lead in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done.
Benjamin? Great job. Yes, yes. Thank you. Good job, you guys.
And if we could have you just stay there for a second. Just wanted to mention, we were at a, I was over at Lindbergh this afternoon.
Yes, you were.
And back in November, and we had a presentation here before the board as well in December about the Lindbergh Blue Ribbon School. And at the time, they're very strict on the rules of who can go to Washington. And so you can't bring the whole school and the students and the teachers, and you'd love to bring them. And so we just had a very positive celebration that Ms. Teba put on and her staff this afternoon. It was very positive. We had dignitaries there. We had a great group of students and they were lively, so they actually had the opportunity today to celebrate. So I just wanted to appreciate the board president allowing me to come in and comment at this time. And I just want to say congratulations again, Ms. Teba, to the staff, the students, the community, to, you know, the board as well that's here, but the whole Dearborn Schools community. This is now our third year in a row of a national blue ribbon school. So again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. And we actually videotaped that event, so eventually it will be on YouTube. So you can look for that if you weren't able to attend.
Thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate it. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. I believe Trustee Thorpe was there representing us.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Before we go on, I'd just like to make a couple of housekeeping items for our board. We want to run very informative meetings, but at the same time, we want to get through them. Just a couple of items. I did talk to Dr. Maleko a couple of days ago, and he knows that this will be, you know, I am going to do this. Please try not to interrupt. This also goes for the college meetings too, so when I say superintendent, I'm actually president too. Try not to interrupt superintendent during his report. There will be times for questions, and he'll answer those questions in the proper order in between agenda items and non-agenda items. I will keep track of the order of trustees that want to ask questions. So please kind of give my attention, I'll write your name down, and we'll move forward that way. This is not to limit engagement or dialogue, this is actually to speed up the process so we can have more time, so we can have more productive engagement. One else, another thing I want to say is, when you do have a question, please ask the superintendent a question. If he'll answer it, if he has the answers, he'll answer it. If not, he'll call one of the directors. So do not turn over to, for example, Mr. Tom Wallace and ask him questions. Address your question to superintendent. Do, 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 do. Other than that, we're good. I did talk to Dr. Maleko last week. I know we've had some meetings that have ran to, you know, past 10 o'clock, some past 11 o'clock. I asked him if we needed to go back to two meetings a month. That's how we used to do it, that's how we used to run our meetings, two meetings a month, the second and the fourth Monday of every month. He didn't think he needed it, but if the board desires to split up the meetings, to have more, you know, more reports, what have you, there'll be a discussion that I'll have with my colleagues, just to kind of, I'm just planting the seeds on that. Other than that, we can go on. Next item, please.
Superintendent Sopate, Agenda Items, Retirements.
Okay, so I have, we'll have retirements and Dr. Chokel's coming up right now. Thank you.
Good evening. We have two retirements. Anne Gleed, 23 and 1/2 years of service, and Seth Kett-Salmond, 15 and a third year of service. Congratulations.
Thank you for your service and commitment, and again, I will send a letter handwritten to the employees, as I always do. I have one more, actually I'm adding that wasn't on there. We do have a video on bidding that's going to go on right now. Tom Wall later on has a discussion item on the budget. And so we have little videos that David Mustin's department has put together, Mr. Shigfree and his team, and so we're going to start, we've been pumping those out on social media, so we're going to play that little video right now on the bidding process in Dearborn. So you may see more of these type of videos that have been going on for the last month that have been pumped out from the communications department, just ways to quickly inform our public with short little clips.
Great, thank you. Next item, please.
Non-agenda Items, State Superintendent Conference, Read by Third Grade.
So I combined these. A couple of weeks ago, I was at the State Superintendent Conference. It was held at the Renaissance Center. And I had the honor as the outgoing Superintendent of the Year from 2019. I had to introduce the new 2020 Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Robert Shaner. So I want to first congratulate him, and he'll be representing Michigan as the Superintendent of the Year. I also have a role in that meeting. Now I'm on the MASA Superintendent Association Board, so there was a lot of meetings, so there's a lot of dialogue that's going on. It's giving us some direct line information to me and for all of you, which I often share in board briefs, and it allows us to kind of advocate. One of the nice things too, because I was giving the address, I got to sit with Dr. Michael Rice, the new State Superintendent, for about half a day. Saw him on a couple of occasions, and I have a relationship with him through our middle cities organization prior. And I was able to speak to him about the Read by Third Grade, among other topics. The reason I'm bringing it up is because we also put out press releases on our position, and we've talked about it many times here in a public forum. And so, you know, talking to Dr. Rice and other educators, and generally you have a consensus with the organizations, I've mentioned it before, with the School Board Association, with the superintendents. And we worked hard years ago to allow for what we call a provision in there for exemptions from the mandatory retention provision. So one of the things, Dr. Chokel put out a blog, just to clarify that, we are fully in compliance with the Read by Third Grade law. We believe in early childhood literacy. We put out a lot of specifics. We had a task force last year that presented before the community in this board. Early childhood specialists under the leadership of Dr. Chokel and the whole district. We have English language development specialists, we have coaches, we have all sorts of things of intervention. So we support all that. There is a limited amount of funding that does come from the state, but the overall enormous amount of what's required in that law is really not a fully funded mandate. And so the one thing that we did put out is we are not in favor of the retention provision that's in that law. Well, I can tell you, the State Superintendent has said that, the Assistant State Superintendent, and superintendents from across the state of Michigan have said that, and again, that came up heavily at my conference. Having said that, we're fully compliant with the law. We believe in having students read at the appropriate grade level by the amount of time, and that's what we will continue to do. But we also will inform our parents, and that's why we put out communications, including a letter, of their rights as third graders under the exemption provisions that they may qualify for. And so that's what we are doing, and that's what we had put out publicly. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that, and also let everyone know that that was a very hot topic, one of the hottest topics that was discussed at the Superintendent Conference. And again, it's important that we are all, the organizations that we associate with, and I know the school, the school board does, with the School Board Association, those are critical organizations because they work to advocate for our students in Dearborn and across the state. So.
Question on that?
Trustee Elaine.
Dr. Maleko, did you get any information? Are there any states that are out in front of us in implementation of this? Because I know there are a lot of, there was a lot of debate, and I think some other states passed it before we did. So is there any, are there any results yet from states that might be ahead of us?
There was no results presented at the conference. I do know that a lot of the origin of this did came, and I believe Florida was one of the states that had passed this provision, but nothing was really presented on the conference as far as any, you know, positive data showing that. In fact, that's what I recall when it was going through, that they didn't really have conclusive data showing positive results.
Trustee Mosad.
I think trustee has got it.
Okay, so trustee Pachlikoff.
I just wanted to piggyback on Dr. Maleko's reference, because I did see a news article that had a headline that appeared to be alarming, that we weren't in compliance with the law, when they did that interview of Dearborn Schools. And I had heard from a couple of people saying, you mean you don't believe in having, you know, in supporting them? And I explained that I think it was misleading. And if you read the article or saw the news report a little bit more in depth, you understood that. They kind of took it out of context with the headline. And I just want to remind people, when you hear or read things in the media, sometimes the grabbing headline is not necessarily the, all the facts and the full story, and sometimes they just get it plain wrong. And so be sure you verify before you jump on the rumor wagon of that that's what you've interpreted with what you've read. I know that an article was written recently, and last November, that had board members on completely different sides of what they believed in when they voted on something. And if the article had, the person who had written it had just listened to our votes, would have known where we stood, but had flipped what we had stood for. So it happens. I'm not condemning it, but it does happen. So I appreciate your clarifying that, because I was hearing from some parents who thought that we were just thumbing our noses at helping students read by third grade, and we're only looking at the retention portion of it, and trying to do what's best for our students in order to help them in a manner that is going to be successful.
Thank you for bringing that up. I saw that too, and I reviewed the video, it was actually the interview, a few times. Definitely was misleading.
Yes, it was very misleading.
Like Dr. Maleko said, you know, we are in full compliance of the law. We respect the fact that it's a law, and we will do whatever we need to do. Trustee Mosad.
Yeah, I just want to also reiterate that aspect that if you. Read something in the media, definitely check Dearborn Schools website to read the entire press release that we, so you get the facts from the source, not the facts from a third party. My question for Dr. Maleko, I know, and thank you for stepping up as well, Governor Whitmer actually is not in favor of this retention clause for this law, and has repeatedly said many times that she is on the side of educators who actually have advised the legislatures multiple times that retention doesn't work. So do you see that now with a slight change in legislature, and obviously a huge change in the executive and the state, do you think this will be reintroduced at all, since the backer for this was the former governor for retention?
Yeah, that was also discussed at our meetings, and there is some, with our lobbyists at the legislature through MASA, and yeah, there is some conversations going on about that, whether or not it picks up traction, because obviously you've got to get agreement with the both bodies. So it is possible, and yeah, she has come out pretty staunch about the retention provision. So it is possible there could be modifications, but when the State Superintendent was asked that question in my meetings, he basically said, this is a law now, so we're planning to move forward, given, and they've had to actually adjust some of their testing schedules and other things. And the one thing that is interesting is that you won't even get these letters, which we sent out to the, and just so that the community knows, the letters are going to come from a different organization, not the Michigan Department of Education. It's actually to come from SEPI, the data that's going to be sent to parents. So that's why we put that information out, so that parents wouldn't be alarmed. And again, I want to remind people that based on the data last year, we would have only had 30 that would have qualified under this retention, and they all would have had exemptions. So I'm kind of jumping in on that. So there is a possibility. And again, if people, enough people are communicating with their legislatures and talking, you know, there could, but there was no prediction that it would happen, and so we have to move forward with the law at this point. But that's a possibility, Trustee Mosad.
Yep. So I'd like just to remind parents, if you do get that letter, that you immediately get into contact with your principal. Again, there are a lot of good exemptions that you can apply for, and we need to definitely take advantage of those if we don't believe that retention is necessary. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Next item, please.
School Improvement Visits.
So I just wanted to mention, we have school improvement visits going. There's a lot going on under the leadership of Ms. Farage, but it's the whole district administration with teachers, and we're always reviewing that process. In fact, we've met with the ADSA, and we're going to, every year we kind of do a review, so I want to commend the team. You know, it starts with Mr., Ms. Farage and Mr., Ms. Sarani, excuse me, and the entire team's involved, and we'll continue to move forward. That also leads me, just so everyone's aware, I'm getting ready on my documents for the board for my evaluation, and one of the things I just finished over the weekend was tracking and updating all my visits. At one point, I wasn't sure, because there was a lot going on in the fall, but I'm on track. I'm over about 260 visits right now, so I believe I'll get up to that normal 400 mark, and I believe it's important for me to be in the schools, just as a principal in the classroom. So a lot of times, if you're coming to look for me on the spot in my office, you may have to look in the schools, because that's where I tend to go, and I think it's important that I am in the schools with the principals and the teachers, and of course, the students providing support. So I wanted to update the board on that. And the next one we pulled off, because I, Lindbergh, we mentioned, yeah.
Next item.
Recognition and Acknowledgements, Commendations.
I just have a couple more that were added that we didn't get on the agenda under my cover.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Something else, whatever.
So I want to, special recognition, and this is something that David Mustin and we have received an email, of Ms. Constance Creel. There are all types of special birthdays, a baby's first birthday, maybe turning 21 is another significant day, however, there are not many who get to say that they have reached 100 years old. Tonight, I would like to wish a very happy birthday to Ms. Constance Creel, retired Dearborn Public Schools teacher, who will be turning 100 a little bit later this year. For those who don't know, oh, go ahead, yes. For those who don't know, our building was an elementary school for many years before being turned into the administration building. Ms. Creel was a teacher right here in our building. On behalf of Dearborn Board of Education and all of us here in the Dearborn Public Schools, I want to wish Ms. Creel a very happy 100th birthday, and of course, many, many more. So something positive. And I have one other thing, Trustee Berry. I just want to mention, the governor's, and again, this happened over the weekend, I think it was released on Friday. So the governor's budget came out, and what she's proposing is very favorable. Again, you know, we know that the system is broken, but it would start weighting the system and bringing more funding to our students, both on a peer pupil basis, but also she has provisions in there about English language learning funding, special education, and at-risk. So I think those are important movements in the direction. Again, it's going to have to be a compromise with the legislature, but we're hearing real positive results. In fact, I talked to Representative Hamud today, coming out of the school aid finance collaborative, and I know Mr. Tom Wall has reported on that, that things look good in the school aid fund. So it's positive and optimistic that maybe some of this funding will come to those students in need. So I just want to report on that as well. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Well said.
Yes.
Next item, please.
Recognition and Acknowledgements, Commendations. Tonight's commendations will be read by Elijah Rushlow from the Magnet School.
Good evening. I'm Elijah Rushlow. I'm with the Magnet program. Unfortunately, Nazar couldn't make it, so it's just me tonight. Commendations to Troy Patterson, Kim Schaber, Cynthia Alvarado, and Mohammed Abu Russ for their work at the National Scripps Symposium held in Texas. This team for Dearborn developed the core of a technology plan that is logical, doable, and reasonable. The Michigan Department of Education was impressed with the Dearborn team and their efforts to support student achievement through computer science opportunities. Commendations to Deneen Charles, Dearborn Public Schools Coordinator for Effective Education, and Community and School Psych Coordinator Gabby Foley. Ms. Foley went above and beyond to secure vision screenings for six students who are new to the country and did not speak English. Ms. Charles secured a van for the off-site screenings and drove the students to their appointments. Now five of the six students are on their way to clear vision in 2020 because of the commitment by these two individuals. Middle school. Commendations to custodian Brendan Coram at the Macalo Unis. Coram goes above and beyond for students, families, and staff at the building. Her compassion for students has truly made a difference in their lives.
Great job.
I'd like to add a commendation. I had found out a few weeks ago that a family that I'm friends with opened their home to another Dearborn students, Dearborn School student that has been dealing with some family difficulties. And when you think about it, there's a number of students in our district that are not living with biological parents or grandparents. So I just want to take a moment to thank everybody out there that is really putting students first by taking in a student and trying to keep their home situation as stable as possible.
Very good. Thank you.
In fact, you're right, Trustee Thorpe, that homelessness is actually on the rise among, even among students.
And we're no different than any other district. We experience the same kind of challenges.
Thank you for that. Next item.
Distinguished School.
So this is a national recognition program on a federal level from the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and it recognizes distinguished schools. Each year, they nominate eight schools, and they actually award two. Last year, we received four of the eight nominations statewide, and we had the team that came out last year and presented before the board around this time. So we've invited the two nominees for this year, although they didn't end up receiving the award, again, receiving that recognition with well over 3,000 states and our schools in the state is quite an honor. And so we're very proud of our schools, all the schools, the Dearborn schools, just like we mentioned Lindbergh before. So the first school I want to call up, and they received this for excellence in serving special populations, and I believe we have Fortson High School here, Ms. Al-Khadri, and we'll ask her, and whoever she would like, if she has others or just herself. Okay. And so, all right. I'm willing to present. Was that you, if you're certificate? I know you received one from the feds too, but.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So the second school, and I can see they're here, and I think we see some of the staff members. We have Salina Elementary here, so I'll ask Ms. Stanley and actually any of her staff that she would like to bring up or from the community to come up and receive. Yes. And excellence in serving special populations as well. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you to the board for all of your support as well. It is because of you, we can do what we can do. So thank you very much.
Everybody is here. Thank you. We need our two. Get every, oh, come on, Steve. Come on, Barb, come on, Jeanie.
Trying to hide here.
Thank you so much. Thanks again. Thanks, sir.
Again, yes. One more.
It makes me proud to be part of a system that every day opens its doors to almost 21,000 kids, come what may, 2,000 employees. It's really awesome, and their success is so touching. Thank you, Dr. Maleko, and thank you to all of the staff and to the students.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Acknowledgement of donations.
So I believe, Dr. Chokel's coming back up. She's been busy tonight.
Okay, a donation of $1,278 has been offered to Etzelford High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for the Business Professionals of America. A donation of $1,500 has been offered to Nalan Elementary School by Elizabeth Elster to be used to purchase second step grades 1 to 5 bundles, to be used to teach students social, emotional, behavioral skills and strategies. A donation of $100 has been offered to Fortson High School by Michigan Nature Association to be used for an environmental interpretive center field trip. A donation of $5,000 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Novi Educational Foundation to be used for an incubator class. A donation of $5,000 has been offered to Fortson High School by Macy's to be used for the incubator project. A donation of $100 has been offered to Salina Intermediate by Mr. Paul Bruce to be used for the theater program. A donation of $1,500 has been offered to Salina Intermediate by Khalid Abdullah and Obad Maari to be used for PBIS student incentives and awards. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Gear Park Elementary by Muammar Nashal to be used for educational purposes for the classroom. A donation of a baby changing table has been offered to Salina Elementary by Communities and Schools of Michigan to be used to close the gap which restricts parents from participating in school events. We appreciate all the donations.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Approval of Minutes. Approval of Minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Finance Committee, January 13, 2020. Policy Committee Meeting, January 13, 2020. Organizational P-12 Meeting, January 13, 2020. Regular P-12 Meeting, January 13, 2020. Make any necessary correction and move approval of these minutes.
So move support. We have a motion support. Are there any corrections or discussion? Trustee Elaine?
I'd like to correct myself, not the minutes. Mrs. Harris and Mrs. Dmitriu always do a really good job. I've looked at the minutes sometimes, and then I watch the video, and I mean, they use the exact words that we do frequently. So their minutes are usually spot on. I just think that I misspoke. I asked if we track assaults on staff members, and I think this was the wrong word to use. I did talk to Mr. Mashur at length about that. I hear a lot of complaints that people aren't as well behaved these days as they should be. I hear about a lot of fighting. I hear about a lot of incidents. I think I used too strong of a word. Assault isn't, an assault has more of a legal connotation to me, so I just want to explain that I did use that word, and Mrs. Harris got it exactly right. But I think it's more fighting and improper behavior. So that I would just like to say that I think that I misspoke. And then I also asked for an update on the Dearborn Promise. I know nothing is happening on it. to me. So I just want to explain that I did use that word, and Mrs. Harris got it exactly right. But I think it's more fighting and improper behavior. So that I would just like to say that I think that I misspoke. And then I also asked for an update on the Dearborn Promise. I know nothing is happening on it. Again, I probably should have asked for action on the Dearborn Promise, because I think we need to push that. And that's the, I mentioned it at the last meeting, also the one where we could possibly raise funds for student-staff scholarships to attend community college, and to go on to all higher ed. But I should have asked for action rather than an update, because I know there's nothing to update. But I would like us to push on it. So I'll correct myself if you don't mind.
Anyone else? Okay. Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, please attach a unanimous vote in affirmative. Thank you. Next item, please.
Special reports. Food and services update. Dr. Kline Maleko, Mr. Jeff Murphy, Mr. Joshua Bain.
So as they're coming up, as I think everyone is aware, we revamped our food service model this year. And, you know, we had some growing pains as we expected, but we're getting, I'm getting a lot of, as I'm mentioning with those school visits, everywhere I go, I'm hearing real positive from staff, parents, and students, including students from our council and others. So, you know, we're going to continue to work on it, and there's areas of improvement. I know, Trustee Elaine, we discussed an area that we could improve, and we adjusted that. And so we're going to have them present right now as we look for.
Absolutely. Well, for starters, thank you guys for the partnership and for the opportunity to present to you tonight. We thought we'd start off with just some photos, kind of what has been happening around the district. So if I'm smart enough to open up a video, we will do that. All right. So definitely an exciting start to our partnership here in the district. I'll start off by introducing these folks standing around me, and then we'll jump in. So Jeff Murphy has been the Director for Dearborn Public Schools for a number of years now. So he's definitely a familiar face to you all. Next to Jeff, we have Chef Carter Knowles. He is really spearheading a lot of our safety and culinary initiatives here in the district. And starting on the other side, we have Chef Danny Sagir, who's a valuable part of our team as well, heading up a lot of the taste testings and other culinary trainings we're doing. And Asmaqi is our Nutrition Coordinator. She writes all of our menus. The other member of our onsite team that was not able to make it tonight is Stacy. She is an integral part of the food service team as well. And then we're joined tonight by SFE's Director of Compliance, Rachel Lindstrom. So this is a little picture of the team that's in the district each and every day, helping make sure that we put the top-quality food on students' plates. So just kind of a roadmap of where we're going tonight. We're going to talk about just kind of what we've done year-to-date in the district. We'll specifically look at menus, talk some about culinary initiatives, do a brief review of participation revenue, and then look forward to some of the things that we have planned for the future. So one of the early things that we did in the district is we came in and were able to visit all 31 kitchens and update them with some new marketing. So we have some before pictures here, and then we're able to kind of add some exciting signage, wrap some of the lines, and just really provide a fresh kind of look to our cafeterias to match the new kind of emphasis on fresh in the menus. Over the summer, we also brought in a large amount of smallware, small equipment to help us prepare, you know, more scratch items in the cafeterias, as well as recipe books, various compliance materials. And then we also set up menu planning software called Healthy Meal Planner Pro that we use in all of our kitchens, that allow our managers to do things like scale recipes, pull detailed instructions for preparing items, really give them the tools they need to do their jobs well. We also had the opportunity to do several days of training with our staff, with a focus on all the new systems that we've been implementing, and then a really important and enjoyable time in the kitchens, actually practicing preparing some food. And then we were able to bring in for the first week of school 22 trainers from SFE to help make sure that our kitchens all got off on the right start. And the staff did a phenomenal job and continues to do a phenomenal job preparing great food for the students each and every day. As Dr. Maleko indicated, any transition, you're going to have some bumps along the way, but our staff has been phenomenal and has really taken things in stride and has continued to put out really high-quality food for the students here in Dearborn. As we're talking about staff, you know, very early, as we came in, we analyzed kind of staffing levels and compared that to what we needed to be able to execute the best, you know, possible menus, and realized that there was a gap. And so we have actually brought in 77 new employees this school year to the Food Service Department, bringing us up to a total staff number of 197, which is the largest the department's been by a significant margin. So that's definitely an accomplishment for us, and is really helping us continue to push the envelope forward when it comes to quality in the kitchens. As far as the menus themselves, you know, one of our company's focuses, and definitely a focus here in Dearborn, is on variety and on choice, and allowing students to have access to choices. So our typical menu is going to have three entrees at the elementary, between five and seven at the middle. And then currently, we're at six to eight at the high school, and I anticipate that continuing to expand and offer more and more choices as we move forward. And then a really great thing that these students have embraced with open arms is the fresh fruit and vegetable bars that we have at every single building, every single day, where students can self-serve and take as much as they want of fresh, healthy produce. Our menus are constantly evolving. We don't use a fixed menu that's rotating every three or four weeks. They're constantly changing, and a big part of that is feedback. And so student feedback is obviously very important. We've got a picture here of a focus group at Stout. We've also had the opportunity to take part in several different parent meetings and get feedback from parents. And then we also have an employee menu committee made up of food service employees that meet monthly to review the menu and kind of help us look at it maybe from a prep perspective and help us consider things that maybe we overlooked when we were planning them to make sure that things run as smoothly as possible. We also have a lot of fun doing monthly promotions in the cafeterias, especially at the elementary level. So we have some pictures here from Halloween promotions where we had a line decorating contest among all the kitchens. And then each and every month, we have different promotions, often centered around a kind of healthy theme, but just making, you know, kind of new, exciting things happening in the cafeteria, keeping the kids engaged. Another neat feature that we have available to the district is our interactive menus via Nutrislice. These are linked through the district website, but you can also find them at dearbornschools.nutrislice.com. So in addition to the print menus that we send home, we have these. They're fully interactive. Parents can go in, look at nutritional information. If you have a student with special allergies or dietary needs, you can actually filter by those. It's a really great tool for our nurses. You can actually go through and plan out for like a diabetic student, for instance. You could plan out a whole day's meals, looking at carbs and help with dosing of insulin, things like that. It's also available on Android and iPhone, and you can actually ask Alexa what's for lunch, and she will happily answer. So really some neat connectivity there. There was a video, I don't know if I queued it up, so we'll be sure we put it on the food service website, so people can check that out. Probably my favorite part of Nutrislice and favorite feature that's available there is the ability that parents and students have to give us feedback. And so they can actually go directly into the app or onto the menu and tell us, you know, what they think about the food. And we review that regularly. So I have here a few different quotes that we pulled off of Nutrislice that are just kind of fun. So, you know, "Don't tell mom, but I like this Alfredo better than hers." "Your secret's safe with us," anonymous Bryant student. "My daughter loves these crunchy beef tacos," which has been a hit district-wide. And then "They're as big as my face." And we have a picture here of the cinnamon rolls out at Smith that are quite popular with the students. Now I'll move on and look a little bit about culinary. When it comes to food, the culinary aspect is obviously very important. You know, we've got two culinary whizzes standing behind me that spend all of their time every single day in our kitchens, kind of helping move our culinary offerings forward. One of the big things that we do, that we are continuing to do more and more of, are taste testings. And so we have on the left, you know, a kind of formal taste testing booth. That's one way that we can do it. And then the picture on the right is of students actually just receiving a small sample and a survey as they come through the line. We use both of these to help try out both upcoming menu items and then prospective menu items, and help us tweak recipes and really hammer down exactly what the students are looking for. Our guys have been busy. They've developed over 40 recipes so far this year, specifically for Dearborn. And we have a special emphasis on plant-based recipes that we're really starting to roll out into the kitchens currently. So this month, and then on the menus district-wide next month, we have a whole variety of new plant-based items that we're really excited about. The picture here is of some roasted vegetable polenta, which I'm excited about. And then additionally, we are actually partnering with manufacturers producing products specifically for Dearborn, tailored to Dearborn student tastes. So we have things like, you know, different kinds of meatballs, various different deli meats, chicken shawarma, items like that, that they're developing for us, that we'll be seeing on the menus moving forward. Roving Chef is another favorite program that we have here. So this is a program where the chefs go into an elementary school, they work with a group of students, and do some nutrition education while teaching the students how to make a meal for themselves. So really a fun event. We're going to do these at all the elementaries over the course of the year. In fact, this week, the guys were going to be out at UNIS, where we'll be doing these events with over 100 students. So really an exciting kind of activity. And then students get to walk away with certificates and a chef hat as little souvenirs of their time that they spent with us. We also do catering. Thankfully, I'm not generally the one doing the cooking for those, but the guys do a wonderful job. And all revenue generated from catering goes right back into the Food Service Fund for the district. So it just helps us continue to move the program forward. Now we'll look at some participation charts. Participation has been a big success for us this year. So on this graph, the blue line is going to be the participation levels by month for last year. You'll see it kind of yo-yo up and down. That's because serving days are different each and every month, depending on the length of the month. The orange line there in the middle is going to show what we budgeted for this year. And then the green line on top is where we actually are. So we're, right now, 29% year-over-year for breakfast in participation. And then we're up 24% year-over-year for lunch. So the students are really, you know, showing us that they're responding positively to the great food that our staff's putting out every day. We also look at revenue associated with those meal increases. This is definitely a success story as well. So like I mentioned, we do have our own independent food service account that's separate from all the other district accounts. Last year, the district brought in just over $9.1 million in food service revenue. We anticipated $10.6 million in revenue this year, but are actually on course to exceed $12 million in revenue. So we're having a lot of success financially, and that's all dollars that we get to pour back into the program, whether it's on better food, updating kitchens, things like that. Now, just looking forward at a couple of the different initiatives that we're going to be implementing over the coming months. The first one is mobile ordering. This is a neat functionality that's actually tied to the Nutrislice app, where students can actually get on their smartphone, place an order, and then pick it up in the cafeteria. We're going to start that off with staff at a couple of different buildings to kind of iron out the kinks, and then we'll be releasing it ultimately at all three high schools. So kind of a neat opportunity there to just continue to kind of cater to students and their needs. We're also going to do what the district has been doing for several years now, and doing capital investment projects. This summer, we're going to be updating serving lines at six elementary schools, as well as bringing in various smaller equipment items into schools around the district. We're also really exciting to partner with schools. A lot of our buildings have community gardens, and so we are in the works of kind of hammering down some partnerships there, where we can take the programs like Roving Chef into the gardens, do some hands-on, you know, kind of nutrition education right there, and then tie in culinary experiences using fresh herbs and produce. So really exciting opportunity there. And then finally, we're going to be putting together a Food Service Advisory Board. This will be just kind of a cross-section of district stakeholders that are going to allow us to meet together and to talk about kind of the direction that we're taking the department, get input from individuals, you know, be they parents, students, administrators, you know, anyone who has kind of a stake in what's going on in the Food Service Department, and then we can collaboratively move forward. So I will stop talking now. I wanted to thank you all again, just for the opportunity to partner with you and to update you, and at this time, we'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. The only thing I was looking for, where's the samples?
Forgot the samples.
Trustee Thorpe?
For the Food Service Advisory Boards, are you going to have them both at a district level and even narrow it down per school, knowing that there could be different tastes in the different areas?
Yes. So I believe that the actual board would be at the district level. We do different focus groups and events at the building level though regularly, because there are, as you indicated, different grade levels and different, you know, even different schools will have very, very different kind of tastes. We, to this point, have been keeping the menus district-wide, but have recently started fracturing off a couple of the different schools with specific needs. So we'll see more and more customization as time goes by.
Thank you.
Yep.
Trustee Elaine?
I appreciate the change this year. I really like that it's got a lot more fresh food. That's a real plus. Everybody likes food, so the improvement in food is so important for students, and I appreciate any improvement in nutrition. It's, I mean, it directly bears, of course, to student performance. A couple of things that I am a little bothered by, quite a bit of prepared and packaged food. I guess that's inevitable. I don't know how much of that there is, but I hope you're using as much local. You did mention some of the herbs, and I hope you use local as much as possible. We've made really good progress, thanks to Dr. Maleko. And I must say, Trustee Barry was another person who pushed out the idea of everyone in the district being eligible for food. So a couple of things that we've done that I really appreciate under their, particularly Dr. Maleko's leadership, is the sharing table. Instead of having kids throw away food that they don't need, I think that's really wonderful. And that came, actually, it came up through the system from people who just were upset about seeing the waste that's going on. Waste reduction is something that I have a real concern with. I think I'm the only person in America, I feel like it sometimes, I'm the only person that doesn't think we should be throwing everything in landfills. We are going to start having to pay more and more for landfills. So waste reduction is going to be a really important thing. So along that line, I'm always thinking, is there some way that we can reduce that? For example, I don't know whether you can use an old-fashioned thing like real silverware. I know you probably can't use trays because they're bulky. Maybe there's a lot of movement and confugality to try to get them back to a dishwasher. But have you considered using silverware instead of plastic?
No.
And I begged, and I threw a fit, I guess, in the one meeting that Mr. Murphy was in and Mr. Bain. I just don't understand why we can't use cardboard instead of styrofoam, which we know is poisonous in the environment, but...
Well, I have good news for you. You're not the only person in America that cares about these things.
Oh, good. Glad to hear that.
And we actually, as a company, are exploring sustainability pretty extensively. I am not the expert on that, though, so I'm going to hand it over to Rachel and let her kind of take that.
I'm not the expert either. However, one of the girls on my team is a registered dietitian, and she's actually expressed interest. And so for the last couple of weeks, she's been researching project, or products, I should say, to utilize in the cafeterias. The biggest struggle she's dealing with right now is to get it to a price point where it makes sense for a district to utilize. So she is doing that research. In addition, she's looking at things like composting with companies as well. So from a grand scheme of things, that's something we're very interested in, and we are going to move forward on. It's just not something that we're able to present at this moment, but it is on our radar.
With the price issue, of course, we all know, the more you do it, the more it drives, in some things, it drives down price, so.
Yep, exactly.
Trustee McDonald?
I just think this program is wonderful. Not only are we providing better options for our students, but we're also giving them educated information in making healthy choices. And food is just so important to every aspect of life, as far as communities and everything that we do. So I think it's important to get them involved and understand, and get them excited about what they're doing. So I want to commend you on that. I did have a concern also, as Trustee Elaine had said. Is there a way to measure waste? So I'm wondering if we do that, or if there is a way to do that, or...
Yeah, we track food waste in the kitchens. As far as, you know, disposable kind of items, that's something that we could start to track and kind of see where we're at. That's not something that we currently track.
Okay.
But we could, yes.
Because I'm curious to see the movement on there. And I would have liked to see the waste from previous years to see, because this, I'm sure, has made a difference.
Sure, sure.
But I'm interested in that. But I also had another question. You talked about pre-order, but that's not quite engaged yet. But when you were talking about, like, students with special nutrition needs, I'm wondering how, at this point, until that is engaged, especially with, like, L- how at this point, until that is engaged, especially with like elementary students and their, their parents can go on and set up the menu for them and preorder it. At this point, without that option, how is that done if there are special needs for students? How does a parent take control of that?
Sure. So, you guys want to handle that? You want me to? I can speak to it. So special diets are something, we have a tremendous number of students in the district that have special needs as far as food, you know, whether it be something like an allergy or a medical condition. We typically partner with the school nurses. In those cases, we also have, the state has different forms that we utilize to track those different items. And then we also utilize our POS to alert our, our staff what the students' needs are. Our kitchen managers do a phenomenal job of keeping track of the building, or the children in their buildings that have special needs, really help them out as far as that goes. And then we also, if it's an incident where they're, we need to tailor a menu specifically to the child, that's something that we can do. Just, just this morning, I worked with a parent that had a multiple different, you know, special dietary kind of requirements. And so we're working on putting together a tailored menu for that student so that there's no, you know, danger of them getting product that would kind of go against what they need.
Trustee Moser?
Yeah, I mean, since the beginning of the year, I've been talking to parents about the change of, of the menu and most of it has been very positive. So that's great to hear. My question is that to, and now students are very conscious of also what they eat or how many grams of sugar, how many grams of protein. So do you, in the cafeteria, do we tell the students, even at the elementary level, since we're giving them a choice, what are those, the meals, how much carbs they have? Do we have any information that we tell them that?
In, in the buildings, we don't. The best thing that we would have would be the, the app or the menus, yeah.
Trustee Petrov?
Okay. A couple of questions, and one was briefly touched upon and it goes along with, I was a city beautiful commissioner for many years and reduce, reuse, recycle was our mantra. And so composting, with all of the fresh produce that we are providing now, I know that was a big question in the past of not providing it because of the amount of waste that's generated from fresh fruits.
Sure.
And vegetables, because at the end of the day, their, the ability to maintain them over the week is limited. So if it's not being used, composting would be, I know that we have some schools that do have their own gardens already. And we might want to continue to explore the ability to compost and maybe put together something fairly simple, you know, get an old rain barrel kind of option going where the students can throw in any of the old fruits and vegetables. And then that being said, kind of taking along with that, the whole idea of the fresh fruits and vegetables always was problematic and it's seasonal at times. And I know, you know, just as we all go shopping at the store and right now, you know, some fruits are much more costly and vegetables because they're out of season as opposed to others. How, how do you always have the ability to provide a, a cost-effective balance of, of those kinds of things when we know that a lot of the fresh fruits right now may not necessarily be at the best price point?
Absolutely. And that's something that we, we look at weekly. There definitely is seasonality. You know, we're not going to see watermelon on the salad bars this time of year. And so we, we're looking at the, the pricing on those. One thing that has really benefited us is a program called the, it's actually through the Department of Defense, DOD Produce, where the Department of Defense has a national distribution network for produce. We're able to get produce through them at a deeply discounted price. It's federally subsidized. And we're able to get produce from, you know, warmer regions. And so we can pull in some items from there. But really, it, it just comes down to each week as we're placing orders, looking at what new kind of price trends are.
So you don't always have the options.
We always have...
Bananas and apples are always going to be there and oranges probably.
Sure, especially with the fruits. They're the ones that are more affected. So, you know, grapes have been, have been harder to come by this time of year. And in that kind of situation, we may bring in, you know, like a frozen blueberry cup or something like that to try to kind of supplement during this time of year.
All right. Thank you.
Dr. Mead?
I think as board members, we're all very concerned about the strategic plan. And one of our missions is students first. And I just really think that this program coincides beautifully with our main mission. So I appreciate very much all the service that you're giving to students with all these options and all the education that you're giving them. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Very well said, Dr. Mead. Dr. Maleko?
Thank you. And I just want to mention too, as you're mentioning about students, this started with our students four years ago with our advisory council, superintendent's advisory council, where that idea of looking at this, so it's been a long work and, and process. And I want to credit our students for having the foresight. And so I appreciate that. I also want to just mention too, when we talked about the employees, and just so everyone is aware, by state law, the food service budget is separate from the general fund that operates all the instruction. So I want everyone to know that when that money is being spent, you cannot mix it. And so that is just for everyone to be aware. So one of the motivations for me, when I became superintendent, when I did see Mr. Murphy's aware of Mr. Wall, that we were having this extra money, it was like, well, how do we, we can't use it for the general fund and for instruction, so let's reinvest in our students. And that's what we've done by upping our food service program. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.